Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, May ninth, 2023. Please rise for a moment of silence. The Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Allenson?
Here.
Counselor Carmody?
Here.
Counselor Fishbein?
Counselor Laffin?
Here.
Counselor Marrone?
Here.
Counselor Tatta?
Here.
Counselor Testa?
Here.
Counselors Andry?
Here.
And Chairman Zavoni?
Here. Thank you. On the consent agenda, the minutes in three O are being accepted as amended. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move we approve and accept as amended consent agenda items A through O.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Items removed from the consent agenda, I am aware of none. Onto public question and answer. And we don't seem to have any takers. Onto item six. Can I get a motion on item six?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the outdoor dining in the public parking area of Simpson Court downtown Wallingford.
Subject?
Subject to all statutory, regulatory, and public health and safety requirements.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Testa, if I heard correctly. Thank you. Mayor, your item.
Yes, I believe, I believe the item on the agenda deals with, in part, new statutory requirements, however, with regard to the use of the public property. There's this change with regard to sidewalk use, and four feet of sidewalk must be available for public use. So any use of the sidewalk is constricted by that. It's four feet. I think previously we were using thirty-two inches as the measure, but the state law says four feet. The item before you tonight deals with the use of the parking in Simpson Court. We have the freedom to allow that by action of the council, and that is permitted, but it does require, as in the past, the, the decision of the town council to allow that to occur, and then it would be cordoned off and allowed for, basically, dining in the parking area in Simpson Court. We will try to place that area in conformity with the various property owners' desires, but I am told that some are open to having parking extend into the area in front of their respective store, business, whatever. So with those comments, I believe we have people here interested in, in the action to be taken, allowing that parking to occur.
I did get a phone call from Maria Panno of Half Moon, and they apologized that they could not be here tonight. They did, they did make a request to use the parking spaces as just described by the mayor, but as a result of a birth in the family, they are unable to attend tonight's meeting, and they wanted us to consider it favorably because it certainly helped them survive during COVID, and they continue to see the benefits in, in what, since emerged from COVID, it continues to help them economically significantly, keeps people downtown, is basically, in summary, what she told me. Counselor Laffin?
Just to add to that, Representative Mr. Dees indicated to me that they don't object to use of their area, the parking, however, they, they, they are not intending to participate in putting any tables out.
Thank you. So I've, I've always supported this in the past, and I, and I love the idea, and I love the energy that it's created downtown, but at some point, I, now that COVID is kind of waning off, I'm a little concerned or at least putting thought into the, to the concept that, that these businesses in this row have, have an advantage over other businesses. And, and I'm not, I'm not entirely opposed, but I wasn't sure if there was some sort of, you know, maybe they need to kind of pay for the spaces that they decide to use in some sort of trade-off. I mean, there's nothing then, you know, why, so Archie Moore's across the street can't use their spots across, from their location, off their sidewalk because of where their business happens to be located. So it, I think it's at least something that we need to be cognizant of or aware of as, as we go forward.
Thank you. Counselor Testa?
That's an interesting point Counselor Laffin makes, and I have a, I have a friend who owns a business a little farther down Center Street, who, who has raised issues with the fact that, you know, there's, what we've done up in Simpson Court maybe makes it, puts an advantage on the businesses up there, and he's struggling a little farther down to try to get people to come. And, and what I said to him was, you know, look at what, look at what you have, and if what you have needs some type of concession on a part of the town, then let us know, because that's what we need to do. Because that gets to my thoughts about this. Rarely, get some face facts, rarely do we deal with things that are kind of town stuff, and everybody gets around and they talk about it, and they say, oh, that would be nice, like small-town stuff, like the downtown, this, that, and the other thing, and, and someone says, oh, that'd be so nice if you could do that, so nice if you could do that. And, and you realize that, well, there are, there are restrictions, there are guidelines we need to follow, but sometimes you just think to yourself, yeah, common sense, you know, the community wants to gather in this area, it's an advantage. There, there are so many things, positives that could come out of this, let's go along with it. And if by doing that, you then potentially set some type of precedent, you agree to look at other people's appeals in a similar way, where you say, well, if we have to make a little bit of an exception for you, so that you can, you know, get an advantage as well, we could look at that, too. Maybe it's allowing something on a sidewalk in a different area of town where you don't normally do that. So I think, in general, this particular issue, I'm, I'm totally in favor of, because it's just in that part of town where we love to see excitement. There are businesses everywhere, and these businesses struggled through the pandemic, and they, they did what they had to do to try to get through it. We helped them out a little bit, and it's, it's a part of town where there's a lot of excitement going on. And if we can just continue to generate excitement in that area of, of town, it spreads. It spreads around the corner to Michael's, it spreads around the back corner to the brewery. It just, it gets people up there, and they're like, oh, look at the, look at, nobody worries about regulations. Don't get me wrong on this one, but nobody, nobody like thinks first of the regulations when they drive up there on a Saturday night, and they see everybody out in the partying, you know, in a good way. They're all together, the town is there, and people are scrambling all over the place, and there is parking in the back, there's room. We're just seeing a lot of excitement. And, you know, we came out of an area where, where things were dead for two years. So if we can continue to provide incentive and give a little bit to businesses that are willing to put all the effort in, which is what certainly the folks at Gaetano's and the other businesses have done, I think it's, I think it's a, it's one of those decisions where you just say, what would the community like? And if we have to make an exception, that's cool, let's make the exception. So I'm all for it. And, oh, thanks.
Counselors Andry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to respond to the comments that Counselor Laffin made about Archie Moore's. Aren't they utilizing the sidewalk there, too, already?
They, they are.
Yeah, and I, and I think to the mayor's comment about the four feet, I think they just reline those sidewalks, so they pulled them back a little bit closer to the building, if I'm not mistaken. So I, I think that bodes well for, you know, the uptown portion, and I understand, I understand the comments and the arguments about, you know, gee, further down Center Street, we, we might be, there might be a potential conflict, I guess is the best way to say it, that they've got something uptown that we can't get downtown. But to Counselor Testa's point, what could we do? If there's something we could do, maybe we could look into it. I don't know what that might be, but I, I'd like us to try to be creative and engage on that level. I think we, we reacted to a lot of this because of COVID, and I think a lot of the residents enjoy what's there. I know I do. I, I walked uptown last week, and I, I was just to go for a walk, and ran into people I knew uptown and sat down with them. So to me, that's an automatic magnet, and I think we need more of that uptown. And I'd like to see us to continue this, and at the same time, if there's ways to be creatively flexible and minimize any impact, I realize losing spaces in Simpson Court is of an impact, but I would like to try to be creative to try to keep this motion going. So hopefully, all of us up here can support it, and, and/or if we've got any concerns, maybe work to, to address those as we go forward, but I'd like to see this continue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin?
Just as a clarification, this is just for the parking area in Simpson Court, though. So everybody can keep using their sidewalks, including the businesses in Simpson Court. So we're really talking about two businesses. That's all. And I love those businesses, but at some point, when do we stop? We gonna do this forever? They get a, a free additional, a free additional thousand square feet every summer because of where they're located near government property? That's my, that's my discussion point, and that's my concern with, with the whole thing. And it, it's nothing, you know, you guys are taking advantage of the opportunities given to you, and during COVID, and the advantage. I totally understand. Of course, you're going to want those additional spaces and that additional square footage. I'm just saying, are we setting a precedent going forward? And that's what concerns me now that the pandemic stuff is subsiding.
Counselors Andry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and this is not a direct response, Tom. I, I just wanted to add something, that it kind of just dawned on me. I, I, I was one of the people that pushed back against the town, getting back involved with the lease for all the parking behind those buildings, because I always felt that was something the town should have taken care of, the, the things that we were supposed to do back there, the maintenance, cleaning up, and I felt we should exit the lease agreement. I'm going to be straightforward with that right from the get-go. And the argument usually passed up here, and the argument always was, it was an asset and a benefit to the center of town to have all that additional public parking available within the lease agreement. So I make the same argument today. There is an advantage of having, having that dining being made available. And I understand, we're just talking about the spaces in Simpson Court, but I think in concert with what else people could do elsewhere on the sidewalks, and whatever else we can get creative with, it's, it's an asset and adds value. So being that type of a mindset, I would like to see this continue going. And I, I don't know, to be fair, how long we should continue to do it, but right now, there's demand for it, there's, there's a, there's an ask for it, and I don't see why we can't do it. And again, at, from the same standpoint, if there's something else we could do to, within regulations, stretching a rule to help other businesses, I'd like us to entertain those as well. But I, I think it's definitely an add-on and an asset to the center of town. Thank you.
Counsel, Counselor Marrone?
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, you know, during the pandemic, when we saw the people outside partying and whatnot, or eating their meals outside and whatnot, you know, nothing really changed in town in terms of the, you know, we have all these regulations to try to prevent, like, all these negative outcomes, but the really, nothing really changed. I mean, it was, people had a good time outside, and that was pretty much that. So I think this is a good starting point, and I think it would probably behoove us to take a look at maybe some of the other regulations that we can relax all over town to perhaps encourage, you know, this type of thing. I mean, there was places with tents and parking lots and whatnot, which didn't really create any major issues, you know, because most of these businesses are open, you know, predominantly at times when people aren't going to work and so on, so it's, or not open, but that's when, you know, they have the most customers. So it's, you know, I think this is a good starting place. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo much of what Counselor Marrone said and some of my other colleagues. I, I think one good thing that came from the pandemic is the increase in outdoor dining. This is such a great thing. It's so wonderful to sit out there at Gaetano's or at Half Moon and see all the lively energy, the energy, the excitement, the activity in our town center. To me, this is a no-brainer, and I, I will be supporting it.
Counselor Testa?
Well, just one thing that come to mind, when we talk about places all around town, almost all of them are situated where they have a private parking lot. So if they were to ask to, you know, put some tables where there would be parking spaces, it would be the landlord that would okay that, and they probably, they may have to check with planning to see if it would be allowed, because it reduces the number of park, but I mean, you're usually dealing with the owner of the property. This is a rare situation where these restaurants are fronting a lot which we own, so, you know, I don't think it's something that is going to lead to, you know, wholesale regulation violation. I think it's just something that makes sense, and, but maybe it will encourage other, other landlords around town to do the same, which, but actually, I don't think they needed it, because I think they're all doing it. I think everybody's acknowledging that whatever we can do to, to get people to go to our restaurants and our, our shops, everybody's in favor of that, because we just want to get outside and have some fun. Thanks.
Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. Sorry. It's clear where I'm going on this, and it's clear that you have the votes, which is great. It's fine. I'm not going to lose sleep over it. Mike, I just, there are a couple of points I wanted to respond to. I think I'm being consistent, and that the spaces downtown in the public parking projects that we performed are now going to be removed in the favor of what was the argument against specific businesses. At the time, and I still completely support fixing all those parking lots and maintaining them and making them look as beautiful as possible, but they were helping in a larger area. These, this is designed, and it's, excuse me, and it's a very motion to only affect that very first row of Simpson Court, basically. And that, that's the difference to me. And somebody that would have worked it out with a landlord, I guess that's their property, that's how they management, manage it, there is likely some sort of compensation that would occur. And, and that's my only thing. I'm all for it, but there isn't a, you know, there's an extra thousand square feet being offered for free. And, you know, what does that look like then, then how we manage the rest of our companies, our rest of our properties? That's my concern. You know, and you look at, like, downtown parking in New Haven, or if you went to New York City during the pandemic, people were in the street with, would set up little huts and tents. So then, do we allow the businesses, knuckleheads, and Archie Moore's or Michael's to set up barriers out into the street there and, and take those spots as well? That's the kind of thing that I start to then think about and worry about, that's all. And, you know, for, what, a dollar, a dollar twenty-five an hour is what you would pay to go downtown in, on New Haven, or Middletown Moore in New Haven, or Hartford. You know, it's tying up a spot, and we, we already provide the free parking, we're taking it away in favor of specific businesses, and that, it's, you know, we talked last week about, about principle versus scale when we were talking about the budget, and it's the same thing for me here. I'm, I'm for the principle, but it's all about the scale in this situation, so.
Counselor Tatta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm supportive of this. I love, you know, driving by, and you know, sometimes you, you don't even think you're going to go or visit these places, and then, you know, you go by on Thursday night, and Johnny Roz is out there, and people are having a great time, and, and you stop, and you want to stay. It's great. It's, I think it's really made that whole area very vibrant. And so I think instead of saying that, that these, you know, a few are getting an unfair advantage, I think we need to look at maybe giving more the same type of advantage, so to speak. Because I think, you know, we want to be a town that's business-friendly, we want to attract people to our town, and I think this is a very simple, inexpensive, or if not free, to the town way to do so. So I'm definitely supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. So I see a fair number of new or unusual faces in the crowd, and
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor.
Just, just one, one thing you need to consider is the length of time. There, there is some concern, I think, for WCI about the Celebrate Wallingford, which would mean the time would end with September thirtieth or so. There's also an issue over public works being able to remove things before we get snow, which would probably mean October thirtieth. But I think, hopefully, we can have some discussion, and you need to consider the length of time this would be cordoned off for dining.
Thank you. Before I go to Counselor Fishbein, I started to say a fair number of unusual faces in the crowd. Our public comment is typically limited to twenty, twenty minutes per item and three minutes per speaker, and I just want you to be conscious of that before you start speaking. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure the chairman didn't mean unusual faces, he meant unfamiliar faces.
Some, some of them are familiar, but not usually here.
You know, I, I do have to express that I see where Counselor Laffin is coming from. You know, one, and, and I guess, and I don't know who has the acumen to answer this question, but somebody had complained to me that as a part of what was done last year, that a handicap parking space was obstructed. Do we know if that's true? Because I, I had directed them to our ADA coordinator.
I, I don't think, if one was, then another one was created in order to accommodate those who would use it. So I don't believe anyone was, but again, that would have been an effort to create another one.
And I, and the further concern that I got as a result of whatever happened there was that where the handicap spot was, you know, handicap is supposed to facilitate access to the, the places that one is looking to go to, that the handicap spot had been moved away from the front of those areas. So I don't know if it's true, but I think that, you know, if we're moving handicap spots away from the front of, or that, that corner of concentration, I think we should be cognizant of that. You know, I, I will also, you know, I've been up here a while, and I was part of when we did outdoor dining to begin with. And I was very, I stressed very importantly that if we were going to do this, and this was just sidewalks, it wasn't the, the parking lot thing, that we had to be cognizant of ADA regulations. And I know all through the pandemic that at least one restaurant on North Main Street did not allow enough area for a wheelchair to pass, and they were doing outdoor dining. Now, did I call Jones Dave? Did I complain? No. But, you know, I think if a restaurant can't operate, then perhaps we should be apportioning or allowing a portion of this area for those restaurants to accommodate their particular menu, their particular customers, because this is an extension of town property. So, you know, let's just say if, if Half Moon is, is unable to provide that area, this is right across the, the way from there. If we took a section and said, you know, this is for Half Moon to accommodate their outdoor dining because they can't comply with ADA, you know, I, I think in fairness to everyone uptown, we should be considering something like that. So, you know, I like the quaintness. It's sort of, you know, I think of, I've been to Italy once, and everybody eats outside in Italy. It's, I, I, you know, been to the library a bunch of times that have eaten outside there. So I just want to express that concern. I was, you know, surprised when I walked in here, and I did hear Counselor Laffin saying what he did, because I, I do have a level of concern of extension of, of property that, that not everybody has the benefit of. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tatta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question about the timeframe. So if we, if we allow this to remain through Celebrate Wallingford, I mean, I'm assuming the businesses would like that. I'm assuming some people that were, that would visit would enjoy that. I mean, I don't, I feel like last year, that area wasn't really that full. So I'm just wondering why we wouldn't extend it through Celebrate Wallingford, or maybe there's something I'm unaware of, of why we would want to make sure it's, it's gone before then. So just when we talk about the timeframe, that's just a question I have. Thank you.
My recollection of Celebrate Wallingford is that all of Simpson Court was closed to traffic as part of the event.
To traffic, but wouldn't people, pedestrians that are at the event be able to, to enjoy the outdoor dining if it were still set up?
Yeah, my, my recollection is that they did. So, but I, I don't know if, if it limits the ability of, of the organizers to put tents in the area or something like that. So.
Thank you.
Sounds like somebody's here to address that. Before we go to the public, would somebody consider amending the motion to impose a timeline, say, May fifteenth to October fifteenth, or something like that?
So moved?
All right. Moved by Counselors Andry, the amendment seconded by Counselor Fishbein. I don't see any more hands up here, so I'd like to hear from the public. Mr. Ross is already standing. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you. Ray Ross, six fifty-six Center Street, Wallingford, and an eighty-three-year resident of Wallingford. And I think there's nothing nicer than to look at Simpson Court in the summer and see outdoor dining. It's really, really nice, and it's all rest, it's family restaurants. The Gaetano family has been in the restaurant business since I was a kid. We're not losing, like, thirty or forty parking places. We're only losing a couple, maybe ten or twelve, and I have never, never not been able to park in a short distance, usually across from the congregational church. And I think it's a wonderful thing, and I think we should make it a permanent part of the town. Thank you.
If you, if you could hold your applause till the last speaker, sir? Name an address for the record, please.
John Roz. So I created Uptown Rhythm in two thousand and twenty in July, when things were really bad, and I went up there, and we started some music on the And I went up there and we started some music on the parade grounds and it just kept building. And it wasn't only about the restaurants, it was about families walking, the dogs walking, the smiles of people's faces, the energy that was created up there uptown, not only right there in Simpson Court, but also of course where the Library Bistro is and even going a little bit more north and across the street. So just so you understand some of the things, we did themes there. So there was music there for everyone. All these were goodies, Motown, Latin, Star Wars theme. I actually contacted Disney. They sent two characters from the five oh one schedule to have that happen. Do you know what that was for the town kids? Amazing. And not only the kids, how many of the adults were getting their photos taken with the Star War characters? Last year it was Encanto, the number one animation music, um, movie last year for the kids. Think about the kids. The kids were learning about music that we grew up with, something that you understood and you understand. And where do you think I got my cookies from? It came from Mr. D's and who do you think brought them to me? Was Bill Dickinson, our mayor. How about that? All right? So think about what it created, all the smiles. How about this? How about the fans that came from Ashler Village Weekly? Okay? Class reunion committee's coming up there. Cat Callaway's daughter was there. Jewel Mentonero, who sang with the Toys in nineteen sixty-two, they have a million-dollar number one seller, Lover's Concerto. She didn't sing that night, but she was there. She'll probably be there this year if we can do it, if we can get a track or a band. And maybe we can bring Vinnie in to play the guitar tracks for that and we'd be all set. So smiles, energy, fun, joggers, the dogs, parents eating with their children were a big time. And also the biggest thing that a lot of you probably don't know, and maybe the mayor don't even know that. I have the insurance. For the numbers five dash sixty, North Main Street. Here's all the curbs you need that Kurt has. And then I have another policy with all the vehicles and anything else that we do up there, like if we bring a character, or God forbid if I bring a bouncy house. Who do I hand these over to? Insurance papers.
Maybe the law.
On the property. I think it's important. I have to have them in the schools.
Sure.
Who do we give them? Mayor.
These are up here, two thousand and point three. Just in case anybody wants to know that parade route, that is the parade route that I set up on. So safety is there. My vehicles are insured. I'm insured. Anybody trips, we're all in good hands. Thank you.
Liz Davis, thirty-one Odette Drive. Couple of things I wanted to address to the council on some of their questions. Yes, last year we did have the barriers up for Celebrate. It caused a bit of a issue because we couldn't put a lot of tents in that area due to fire code changes. So this year we wanted to kind of look at having those barriers out by, by Celebrate, which is October first, I'm sorry, October seventh and eighth. And that is because we are going to do some other events in that area where it will, if the people still want to, like a town has always put out some barriers in past Celebrate times, and they could still do that. We just need to make sure that our, that, that area is available to us to hold for Celebrate. And if it isn't, that's fine. And if the vote is it goes by middle October, that's, we'll deal. Going further than that, if November first was last year's date and the year before was that, it's a little long for, for that particular area. The other thing was the ADA situation. So with the sidewalks, the building department has gone out and done their measurements. All of those restaurants that I have provided a list for who wanted outdoor dining and seating out there, I believe are all within the limits to do so. So that has been addressed. The other thing was, um, the last restaurant we talked about was Archie Moore's. They had a bit of a problem with one of their areas. And past years I have gone in and had asked them to please just push the table in a little further, a little further, because it didn't meet compliance. And I know the town did that as well. So there is looking after of that. The other thing was about the handicap parking. Last year we did add another handicap spot. And yes, one of them was moved from the front of Gattano's, where the walkway was, over to the other side, um, where the end of Simpson Court is going on to North, North or South Main. So we moved it there because we couldn't encroach on the walkway. And if a resident came in and was handicapped, the walkway wasn't going to be available through a van or a car in order for that handicap person to get out. But we put it directly across from the lane to where the handicap can come in. So that was addressed and it, this year it'll probably be the same type of thing. So we take that handicap place out that's in front of there now and put it across onto the other side of Simpson. So those are a couple of things that I wanted to just straighten out. Do you have any questions? Let me know. Thank you.
I'm going to alternate sides. Thank you. I know who you are, but please tell us for the record.
John Sullivan, sixty-two Dutton Street. I've been in town since about nineteen fifty-nine. And I'll tell you what, I've never seen a community come together as I have seen over the past couple of years that we have allowed outdoor dining in Simpson Court. I know you're going to dot the i's, cross the t's tonight on the handicap parking. I'm not so concerned about that. And apparently, just in my opinion, reading the council's opinions and they're, you know, listening to their points, I think this is going to pass. I don't see it not passing. It's a no-brainer. We should also find a way to extend this to other businesses. And it may need some adjustment to some ordinances currently on the books. Many towns throughout this state have great success with outdoor dining. Brings community together. It brings people from out of town into town to spend money. And these are the things we're looking to do to help our businesses. So I would encourage you to please consider approving this this evening, but then even going one step further down the road. Let's not be here next year talking about this. Let's make it something permanent so we don't have to go through this every year. But let's improve it. Let's consider the businesses that may have objections on taking up their parking. Let's find ways to improve and correct. Let's do it right. Let's take the time to do it right. Coming here once a year is getting a little tired. COVID had a lot of negatives, but a real positive was starting outdoor dining here in the town of Wallingford. There's no better place to be. Honestly, with the music playing, the food, if we could extend it to other businesses, I'm sure they would really enjoy it. But again, we have to consider businesses who have objections, find ways to help them too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name is Steve Belly. My wife and I, Linda, moved here in oh two. My wife opened up what is now Body and Soul Day Spa in twenty sixteen from nothing. I've never come to one of these things, but I felt the need to support my wife tonight because she objected to it last year. We all made it through COVID. I worked through COVID on the front line as a nurse at Yale. Uh, and yeah, a lot of things were temporarily suspended or enacted to make things better and to help businesses survive. Unfortunately, my wife is in a service business and it took a hit for three months because you couldn't do facials, you couldn't do massage, you couldn't do nails because of the risk and the potential for contamination and infection. So she struggled and somehow was able to pay her employees, even though she wasn't open. And then came the outdoor dining thing. I understand it. My wife's family, the entire family is in the restaurant and/or catering business. And we understand what it's like to take a hit like that. However, my question is this. At what point do you say enough is enough and I don't take anything away from those businesses? I love those businesses and I frequent them. However, they had outdoor dining before COVID that was limited to the sidewalk. I thought it was quaint. I thought it was very to, um, I guess to concur with someone else that said something of, oh, I think it was, uh, Councilman Fishbein said Italy. I lived in Italy for two years, tons of dining on the sidewalks. However, comma, not necessarily in the street. Now, my wife has a business there that caters to all age groups. However, she does have a clientele, a large part of her clientele that are older. Some of them don't want to or can't make that walk from the back parking lot to the front. It's tiresome or it's painful. So she's lost some clients to that during that time period that everything is blocked off. So my question is this. If it's fair for one, two, and three businesses to directly benefit from all of a sudden this new square footage, how do you justify that when Archie Moore's, Knuckleheads, Michaels, they don't get any more square footage? They don't directly benefit from those areas that are blocked off? And someone like my wife or the design house or what have you suffer directly, not indirectly, because those spots are now gone? Now, I just for the hell of it watched last year and after work would take a ride to the spa and just to see how many people are dining outside. And there was a lot of days that I would stop by in the afternoon if I was off from the hospital, that it was ninety degrees out and there was hardly anybody in there. Because really, who would rather eat inside in the cool versus ninety-degree heat under an umbrella? To me, it's a no-brainer. So to enact this, and unfortunately I go against what the gentleman that just spoke said, I, I love the fact that we have this bucolic town feel. I love it. That's what drove us here in oh two. However, if it's going to benefit one, it's got to benefit everyone. And if it's going to hurt one, it should seriously be considered. Chairman Laffin said exactly how I felt. I don't understand how it's fair. I don't understand how you can look at it and go, okay, yeah, uh, it, it brings people to the center and this and that. Yeah, but it brings them to the center for three businesses. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If you look, if you look at the other businesses and ask them if their numbers are, are incredibly elevated because outdoor dining is afforded on the other side of the street, I don't think it's going to balance the scales. And I think that if you're going to do that, it's got to benefit everybody equally. And if not, it needs to be tabled until you can figure something out to make it so that it will benefit everyone equally. Because if it hurts one, it hurts everyone. Now you may not feel that way because you like to eat there or whatever, or you like to party outside on a Thursday and dance to the music. Listen, I'm a musician. I've been a singer for thirty-five years. I sing all over the state. But there again, there's a time and a place. There's, there's maybe a better way to do it. Maybe don't put those giant boulders up, but instead on a Thursday when you want to do the outdoor music in the evening, stanchion it off. You know, make it temporary for that evening, we got something going on or whatever. But does it have to be the entire day where it directly affects her business, which is in and of itself struggling enough anyway after COVID? So that's my thought on that.
Thank you.
Joe Mira from EDC. Uh, just point of clarification, I could be wrong, but EDC worked with planning and zoning last year about the other businesses in town on the private parking lots and changing some regulations. They updated the food trucks, accessibility to the vineyards. So there has been a lot of work put into this already. As far as the Michaels and what have you, it's a state road. We don't have jurisdiction over that. Speaking to the benefits of this, I'm not going to say everything you guys said, you just, you've said it, but something to consider that, uh, these are small businesses, a thousand square feet, great. Think about the economy that it's doing for downtown. Small businesses is again, something you can kind of reflect back to the ARPA meetings that we discussed and maybe lost sight of, but small businesses, sixty-seven percent of the funds that they bring in circulate back into the community. So to me, that's an asset to the community, not only to the lifestyle of the people and what have you. Financially, it's a bargain. As far as the other businesses go, uh, EDC goes out of its way for downtown to create, try to create situations where we can increase foot traffic. Foot traffic is healthy personally for people, and I should do more of it. But more than that, it's healthy for businesses. You walk by one business, you go into another business. And to think that for three months, these other neighboring businesses have all this foot traffic walking by their store, this to me, you can't pay for. This is a great asset. And so I thank you for your time.
Jason Michael, Meadow Street. Well, there's been merit to both sides. I'm not going to land on one side or the other. I love outdoor dining. I frequent the places requesting it. I have a couple of points and maybe a suggestion and a question. The cement automobile barriers that are put in, I assume they're owned by the town.
I think they've historically been loaned to us. Mayor, do you know?
I, I believe, I believe there are.
Okay.
There are obstructions.
So, so they're, they're, they're owned by the town, they're installed by the Department of Public Works, they're removed by the Department of Public Works. So at the very least, I don't think there should be a penny of a burden on the taxpayers who fund public works to do this. I'm not saying that, that this is the right thing to do or not, but I, I don't care if it's a hundred dollars. Town workers are installing this for a private entity to profit. And whether it's in a parking lot or a space or not, doesn't make a difference to me. But I think at the very least, these businesses, there should be an accounting of what it takes to do this, what it would take to rent these, or these, uh, these automobile barriers, and it be factored in. I would ask at least that be considered. As I, I think losing the spots is one thing, but spending taxpayer money, assuming everyone's okay with it, is, is a bit of a leap. And secondly, they don't have to be those barriers. They make removable ballards that they use across the world. They go in, they come out in minutes. And it's just food for thought if you're going to table it or think about it next year. This is something that could happen Thursday through Sunday with the onus on the restaurants to put those in and take them out. And then through regular work week, Monday morning, you know, the rooster crows and businesses that are being affected, at least there's middle ground. There would be four or five days without an obstruction and without the need for it. Those can go in, like I said, in minutes. And lastly, the, I, I'm just curious, when the insurance thing came up, if someone is to slip and fall in the dining area in the parking space, who's getting the call from the lawyer? Is it the restaurant? Is it the town? Is there something that can be done to ensure it's not the town? That's it. Thanks.
Liz Davis, thirty-one Odette Drive. We have discussed, WCI has approached the police chief and the community police lieutenant there. And we have talked about the barriers and doing other things other than those cement blocks. It has been told to us that because of the concerns of accidents or somebody ramming into or car going through, that the regular barriers weren't cover it, but the cement barriers are required. So that would have to be something that to have a discussion with the police chief in order to work that out. So we were always told that that's what had to be there.
Edward McCarver, thirty Ridgecrest Road. I, I just wanted to support it because it's fun. You know, I heard it was coming up on the agenda. You know, I remember the first time it happened, you know, locked up with COVID for nine, ten months. I don't know, seemed like an eternity. Then they have this outdoor dining? It was a riot. You know, we had, it was so much fun. I, I loved it, you know? My wife and I have had a number of romantic. My wife and I have had a number of romantic dinners out there, so. Not necessarily with each other, but. Anyway, that's all I got.
All right. I see no more hands in the audience, and I bring it back to the council, Councilor Zandry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, based on the conversation from Ms. Davis, I wonder if it makes sense. You know, we just, we made the amended motion to push it all the way out to October 15th, which is a Sunday. Celebrate is literally a week earlier. I wonder if it makes sense to just back it up to the 6th so that we could clear that lot and have full use for Celebrate? I don't know if anybody's interested in supporting that.
Wasn't that your amendment?
Yeah, I made the amendment for the 15th, so I don't know, should we adjust it to the?
You can adjust it.
I would like us to consider adjusting that back so that we could clear it. I guess it would have to be, you know, Friday morning, I guess, the 6th, so they could clear the barriers and get it ready for setup. So I'd like to adjust my emotion to reflect the 6th, then.
Counselor Fishbein had seconded, and he accepts your amendment and seconds it. With that, Counselor Testa.
Yeah, that's pretty specific. I like that. I made it perfectly clear that I thought this was a wonderful idea. I love the concept. But then, I apologize, sir, I don't remember your name. Steve. Steve stood up and made a very important argument. And that is, there is a business there that is potentially being impacted negatively because the spaces are not there during the day. So when I said earlier, we just, let's use common sense and do what seems to work. This is an example of, wait a minute, let's get together, all right, hold on. Maybe we need to adjust this a little bit so that that business isn't hurt. But we still have the benefit of the evenings with the tables out there and so forth and so on. I'm not, I'm not going to amend anything right now because it'll probably just confuse things. But I would throw this out there. Would, does it seem reasonable that an accommodation or some kind of agreement could be made where during the day, the spaces are not all blocked off? And then in evening, maybe from Wednesday through Saturday, Thursday through Saturday, barriers could then be, you know, we could use police barriers, whatever it is. Someone could do, close them off so that then these activities could take place. Maybe it's Monday through Wednesday. I don't know. But we have Wallingford Center, Inc. We have organizations that could potentially mediate a discussion like this and find some middle ground that might work. I'm still in favor of doing this. But I think we could do it and possibly take into account some other businesses that are finding this negative. And we have just as much an obligation to that business owner as we have to anybody else. And I don't think anybody in that area that is taking advantage of this would object to a compromise that would allow for everybody, you know, to benefit by this or not be hurt by it. So I would, maybe, I'd like to see us look into that. Changing the time, the times that the spaces are blocked off. Obviously, that means get the gigantic blocks out of there. And I thought about that, and my first thought was what was brought up. First thing I could think about, they're there so that people can't drive into the tables. Let's be realistic. We are in a world of crazy stuff happening. But I think with the proper controls, even if we left one line of bricks, but left the spaces around them open during the day and then just put, you know, put barriers up, you would, you could prevent the danger of someone just driving through, but still allow for some type of parking. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Mr. Testa, you appeared to have drawn a response.
Yeah.
Can I just say, I'm not a public speaker, so I don't really like being up here. But I did want to say.
Could you please, could you please?
I understand what you're saying.
Could you please identify yourself for the record?
Oh, my name is Debbie from Gaetano's Tavern, I mean.
Thank you.
So yes, we do take up some parking spaces, but they're all right in front of our establishments. And plus, those parking spaces could be taken up from like a bereavement, could be taken up for regular business. So we're talking maybe 10 spaces. They still have all their spaces in front, across from them. So I don't understand why there should be a problem. There's places in the back. I know some of them are too old to walk up or whatever, but you're only talking three months out of the year. And to remove and take away, I don't see that working at all, you know? Yeah, I don't know how you could do that. You're talking about these big blocks that you'd have to move. And the reason for the big blocks is for safety, so cars won't come in. How would you move them from the day? And we, you know, I mean, everybody's out there during the day, too. And it's just, but like I said, those spaces could be blocked anyways for different reasons. And we're talking, like I said, maybe three spaces, four spaces, right in front of the restaurant, and then right in front of our establishments that are being taken up, which I feel are our spaces anyways. So if anything, we're losing spaces, too. And I get that other spaces are being used because people are coming uptown, but I think a lot of people are parking in back, across the street, out and back. People are walking this time of year, so. And another thing, too, is when I go to Florida every year, there's this place, we go to Jensen Beach, and it's called Jamming on Jensen. And they close the whole street off, and they have arts and crafts out there and all the bars. Like, that's something that we could look into, too, where Archie Moore's, Knuckleheads, Michaels, and everybody could be involved. The whole thing is closed up, you know, one night a week, which would be really pretty. I mean, they get exposure to by people going by, and they see them. They didn't even know that they were there before. So these are things. And what I wanted to say, too, is like Michaels even wrote back to me today and said, I really hope this goes through because it's great for the town. This is Michaels, who's around the corner, and he was happy for it. So, you know, it's just a great thing. When I go outside at night and I look and I see everybody all lined up and all the restaurants full and people walking around with their dogs and their kids and everything, it's just a great, great atmosphere for the town. And it brings a lot of people into the town, too. So I just want to say that, and I'm sorry, my voice, because I hate talking.
Well, I fully agree with the benefit of everything that's happening from noon, you know, afternoon into evening. I was just throwing it out there. Would it be that difficult to have a change? But maybe it would be. That's why I just threw it out there for discussion. Thank you.
Mayor.
You know, with regard to moving the blocks, that would be a lot of effort and time by Public Works. I mean, I really don't think that's feasible. However, we can look into, and this would be something that would take, if it is feasible, it wouldn't be available for this year, probably. But looking at whether it's possible to put the wells, the sleeves, and have bollards that can be moved. The question is, are they protective enough when it comes to motor vehicles? Because I think the concern is that someone is out of control with a motor vehicle, and we don't want them running into the seated diners. So whether or not that's feasible, I don't know. But that would be one thing. They are fairly, I believe, easily removed. They're locked in place. They can be removed. We'd have to look into that, but that's a construction project.
Thank you. Counselor Allenson.
So we're making concessions with the big barrier, I don't know, I call them Jersey barriers. Could we make some sort of a concession where we dedicate two parking spots right in front of Body and Soul to Body and Soul? We can limit hours. I mean, we can make them movable. But, I mean, this way, during the hours of operation for Body and Soul, if somebody is sitting in their spot and it's not them, they can make it a ticketable offense to, and call the, you know, call the police, traffic enforcement for that to happen. The other thing that we might want to consider, based on feedback we got from last year, is a permanent or a temporary moratorium on traffic fines for that area. Because I do know that in the front, a couple of people who were receiving extended treatments were ticketed, and it caused a lot of problems. And just, it's a bad, it's a bad look. You know, we have limited parking left available. And then when somebody is there for a longer-than-expected period of time, we ticket them. But mainly, my point is, I don't see why, since we are making allowances, we couldn't dedicate two parking spots for other interested parties in the front of their businesses as well, for at least the hours that they're operating. I understand that that really isn't my rule to make.
Well, you can amend the motion on the table to add that to it.
I would, yeah. Would you accept it as a friendly amendment?
I would.
Would you second that? To make, dedicate two parking spots to Body and Soul in front of their business for the times that they're open?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of the concept. I just think, you know, coming into this tonight, I thought this is going to be easy, and we are making this so difficult. So I don't know how logistically, I'm open to the discussion. I don't know. I mean, having gone to that area quite a few times, I mean, are we talking about putting the Jersey barriers, whatever we want to call them, outside of that particular area? And they are permanent? I don't want Public Works to have to keep on coming.
No, we're off that discussion. So the Jersey barrier, whatever you want to call them, hasn't changed. What Counselor Allenson is suggesting, that two spaces in front of Body and Soul, the spa, be dedicated to the spa during its business hours as a compromise to solve all the problems, except for the rest of them.
And then, okay, so, but they would be, I'm just trying to figure out, we have all these things blocked off, but these are going to be utilized, those two spaces are going to be utilized during their business hours, so.
No, no, no.
Those are not going to be blocked off.
So to be clear, the blockades do not go in front of the spa. And what they are asking for is two spaces directly in front of the spa.
That will always be open?
Yes.
For cars? Okay. When you said only during business hours, then I'm.
The exclusivity.
Yeah, exclusivity, I got that. Okay. So yes, I'm fine with on the amendment.
Okay. Counselor Laffin?
So what's the amendment?
Is to have two spaces in front of the spa be exclusive for their use during their hours. So there would have to be some kind of signage.
Well, the whole amendment has to include the timeframe, because we didn't vote on that.
That's correct.
And what about the other businesses that couldn't make it here tonight? So just because they were able to show up? I mean, this is, so here's my next thing, all right? Again, this isn't about outdoor dining. I love outdoor dining. Everybody has their sidewalks. Love the outdoor dining. Talking about these specific spaces, all right? One counselor expressed opposition. A second expressed hesitation. One person of all the people that spoke expressed opposition. And we're talking about this for an hour. So something isn't sitting right with everybody because you have the votes. Make the vote. We'll all be done. That's it. You guys can call the question. And if you're not sure and you're not ready to do that, then table this until this can be hashed out. Because if you're going to give two parking spaces to the day spa because they showed up, thank you for showing up. What about TD Bank? What about the interior design place? Do we just give everybody the spots in front of them for the summer? And when does this stop and end? That's all that I'm asking about. And I understand the people here, Gaetano's put a post on Facebook and everybody showed up. That's great. This is great. I wish people did this for all the different issues. But we've got to think about the longer term here. And if you guys are ready to go, somebody call the question, make the vote, let's be done.
Typically, we don't go back to the public after we've come to the council, but.
Excuse Mr. Dees.
Please.
I apologize for coming up.
Thank you.
I hate speaking as well in front of people. My name is Heather Williams. I'm the owner of Mr. Dees.
You have to get closer to the mic.
My name is Heather Williams. I'm the owner of Mr. Dees. I'm from Laurel Ridge Court over here in Wallingford. It seems as though the problem is parking spots. I am willing to sacrifice my two parking spots in front of my shop, or three parking spots, whatever it is they have, to encourage the sidewalk dining to continue. My business does increase when the sidewalk dining happens because of the foot traffic and people finishing up eating. I don't do tableside service. So it doesn't impact my business in a heavy way if I do not have an actual patio set up up there. It does help my business, though, having these other two businesses up and running. So I don't know if it helps your decision at all to let you know that I'm willing to sacrifice my spots for handicap parking or for whatever businesses may need it, just to help encourage the dining to continue. Because it is really quite a wonderful thing to have in town. And it does help a lot of the neighboring businesses I've spoken to because it brings out-of-towners in to come and see what's happening.
Thank you.
So, sorry, I hate microphones, but thank you.
All right. So we have an amendment that adjusts, that sets the time period. An amendment was proposed to that amendment to create two exclusive spots for the salon. Counselor Fishbein, did you agree to that amendment as well? Okay. So first, I'm going to call the vote on the amendment.
Wait a minute, can we just read the full amendment?
If you could, on the microphone, please. Thank you.
So there's the amendment to dedicate the two spots to Body and Soul. And that is tacked on to?
The amendment to have the time set from May 15th to October 6th.
Right, yes.
So that's the first vote on those two combined issues. Please call the roll.
Counselor Allenson?
Yes.
Counselor Carmody?
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein?
Yes.
Counselor Laffin?
If we're doing this, yes.
Counselor Marone?
Yes.
Counselor Tada?
No.
Counselor Testa?
Yes.
Counselors Zandry?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes, the amendment passes. So now we're calling the vote on the motion as amended.
Counselor Allenson?
Yes.
Counselor Carmody?
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein?
Yes.
Counselor Laffin?
No.
Counselor Marone?
Yes.
Counselor Tada?
Yes.
Counselor Testa?
Yes.
Counselors Zandry?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes, the motion passes. Onto the budget.
It works. Charlie. I'm sorry. I'm saying hi to someone out there. Hi, Charlie. Hi, Cookie. These are two Wallingford institutions, and I don't care that I'm breaking protocol. Great to see you guys. Sorry.
Can we start with the first motion on the budget? I'm going to ask for the first motion on the budget, and then we can open discussion. If you, if I could ask you to continue your discussion outside, please, in the hallway. All right. I think maybe it's quiet enough.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the total general fund revenue budget of $179,312.65 per the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022.
23?
It says 22. But 23.
Yes. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Take your pick.
Excuse me. I don't think you have the right.
Do I not?
That's last year's, I believe.
Yeah, I was going to say the budget's higher.
Yeah. We're going to withdraw that motion and second, right? And we're going to have the corrected motion.
Must have imported the wrong one. I apologize. Oh, draw the motion. Yeah. You almost got your budget reduction. I move we adopt the total general fund revenue budget of $186,825.680 for the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to rehash everything we talked about, the motions meeting.
I don't, I don't wanna rehash everything we talked about, the motions meeting. I think I said enough that night. But I did just wanna say what, what my feelings are at this point. So, the, the plan, the package that I presented at the motions meeting, it, it put additional funding into Board of Ed, additional funding for Public Works, some sidewalk repairs uptown, police, fire, and EMS. But the biggest part of that was that there was no tax increase. That plan was amended, so a lot of that additional spending remains. However, now it comes with, with a tax increase. The difficult decision that I'm trying to make is that this still is a lower tax increase than the mayor's proposed budget. So, I kind of find myself in the position where I, I, I think a lot of counselors agreed that the, the zero tax increase was possible and plausible, and I think we had the support for it. But the amendment was made in order to try to avoid a veto. So, now I'm kind of trying to decide between, you know, my, my principles of having to justify a tax increase when I know it was not necessary, per the plan that I proposed, or going with an unnecessary tax increase because it's still lower than what the mayor's proposed. So, that's, that's just kind of the difficult decision we're in at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't see any other hands on the council. Questions or comments from the public? Mr. Chardulo.
Good evening, Paul Chardulo, Two Bayberry Drive. At the public hearing, I made the point that, looking at the budget, that last year, we, we had a budget of about $177 million. We came in about $7 million under expense. So, we thought it was a good budget, apparently. But we were badly mistaken. Now, this year, if you look at where we're at today, the forecast submitted by the mayor is that we're gonna come in at $180-plus million. Just think about that. We actually spent $170 last year. So, what we're saying is we're going to spend $10 million more than last year this year. And that's just not gonna happen. And I'll tell you why I think it's not gonna happen. If you look at the, our performance through March of this year, this only shows January, but we've had new data come in. We're currently, with three months left in this fiscal year, we're currently running about $15 million under budget. So, again, we, we think we're gonna do $180, but we're $1,500 million, or $15 million under, with three months left to go in this fiscal year. So, there's no question in my mind that we're not gonna spend $180 million. We're not gonna come in $15 million under, because I understand that expenses are not linear. They don't happen the same amount every month. But I do believe we're gonna come close to $7 million under, maybe even further than that. So, if you accept that, what I just articulated, and carry that forward to this year, you have to adjust the budget dramatically, the expense budget. It's badly overflated, inflated. And again, history, I think many of you already know this. If you go look at history, we, we do this every year. So, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a proposal that is fairly simple. It addresses it from a macro point of view, and that is that somebody make a motion to cancel the tax increase. I think it's, I'm not sure what it is, $4 million, something like that. And reduce the expenses by the same amount, so you'll have balance. And I think that will create a more realistic budget for the mayor to strive to achieve. And I, I think he'll achieve it. And there's no risk to that at all, because if he needs more money, obviously, he'll come back and ask for it. But I, I just think that we've been doing this year in and year out, and I certainly hope that this is a year will, will change and, and pass a realistic budget, because we are about to enter a recession economically. You know, the Federal Reserve is raising interest rates, and that's not good for the, for the working class. And a $4 million tax increase this year is not good either. Thank you.
Anyone else? Bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Allenson?
No.
Counselor Carmody?
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein?
No.
Counselor Laffin?
Yes.
Counselor Marone?
Yes.
Counselor Tada?
No.
Counselor Testa?
Yes.
Counselors Andrew?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes, the motion passes. Onto the next, please.
I move we adopt the total general fund expenditure budget of $186,825,680 for the changes made to the mayor's proposed, proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023.
There's a second. That was Counselor Testa. Discussion on the motion. There being none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Allenson?
No.
Counselor Carmody?
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein?
No.
Counselor Laffin?
Yes.
Counselor Marone? Counselor Tada?
No.
Counselor Testa?
Yes.
Counselors Andrew?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
I move we establish the property tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 at 29.34 mils. Real estate and personal property taxes in excess of $100 shall be made in two installments, the first of which is due July 1st, 2023, payable on or before August 1st, 2023. The second installment shall be due January 1st, 2024, payable on or before February 1st, 2024. Real estate and personal property taxes of $100 or less shall be paid in one installment due July 1st, 2023, and payable on or before August 1st, 2023, as provided by Connecticut Statute, Chapter 204, Section 12-144. Motor vehicle taxes shall be made in one installment due July 1st, 2023, and payable on or before August 1st, 2023, as provided by Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 204, Section 12-144A. Delinquent motor vehicle taxes shall be paid only in cash or by certified check or money order as provided by Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 204, Section 12-146. Property taxes in an amount of less than $5 shall be waived. Checks in payment of property taxes which have been returned by the bank shall be subject to a $35 fee.
There's a second? Seconded by Counselor Testa. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Allenson?
No.
Counselor Carmody?
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein?
No.
Counselor Laffin?
Yes.
Counselor Marone? Counselor Tada?
No.
Counselor Testa?
Yes.
Counselors Andrew?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes. Motion carries.
I move we adopt the budgets of the divisions of the Department of Public Utilities for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselors Andrew, seconds. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Allenson?
Yes.
Counselor Carmody?
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein?
Yes.
Counselor Laffin?
Yes.
Counselor Marone? Counselor Tada?
Yes.
Counselor Testa?
Yes.
Counselors Andrew?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes. That passes.
I move we adopt the budget of the Capital and Nonrecurring Expenditures Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, in the amount of $1,757,851 in revenues per the mayor's proposed budget, and $1,750,851 in expenditures.
You're off by $7,000. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Allenson?
Yes.
Counselor Carmody?
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein?
No.
Counselor Laffin?
Yes.
Counselor Marone? Counselor Tada?
Yes.
Counselor Testa?
Yes.
Counselors Andrew?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes, the motion passes.
I move to approve special funds of the Board of Education of the Town of Wallingford for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, as attached hereto and made part of thereof, Pages A through C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselors Andrew, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Allenson?
No.
Counselor Carmody?
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein?
No.
Counselor Laffin?
Yes.
Counselor Marone? Counselor Tada?
Yes.
Counselor Testa?
Yes.
Counselors Andrew?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes, motion passes. Next.
I move to approve special funds of the Town of Wallingford General Government for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, as attached hereto and made part thereof.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Allenson?
No.
Counselor Carmody?
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein?
No.
Counselor Laffin?
Yes.
Counselor Marone?
Yes.
Counselor Tada?
Yes.
Counselor Testa?
Yes.
Counselors Andrew?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes, motion passes.
I move to approve Capital Appropriations and Force Reserve Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, in the amount of $595,626 in revenues, and $595,626 in expenditures. This represents the amount as of March 31st, 2023, which may decrease as expenditures occur through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Allenson?
Yes.
Counselor Carmody?
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein?
No.
Counselor Laffin?
Yes.
Counselor Marone?
Yes.
Counselor Tada?
Yes.
Counselor Testa?
Yes.
Counselors Andrew?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes, the motion passes.
I move we authorize the chairman to sign three copies of the finalized budget, two to be filed with the town clerk, and one to be placed on file in the Wallingford Public Library.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Fishbein. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Allenson?
Yes.
Counselor Carmody?
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein?
Yes.
Counselor Laffin?
Yes.
Counselor Marone?
Yes.
Counselor Tada?
Yes.
Counselor Testa?
Yes.
Counselors Andrew?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
I abstain, but I'll do it anyway. And that represents the motions on the budget for fiscal year '23, '24. Onto item eight. This is kind of both Counselor Testa's item and Attorney Small's item, because you've given us material to consider. And do we have our consultant here? Would you please come visit with us, please? There's this nice table right in front. And once you've pretended to make yourself comfortable, if you could remind us who you are for the record.
I'm Claire Collins. I'm Senior Consulting Manager for UHY.
Thank you. Ms. Collins, when you do speak, I am told you need to be on the mic more. Thank you. So, Counselor Testa, I don't know if you wanna go first, or, well, Counselor Testa?
Yes, please. My rationale for asking for this agenda item is fairly simple. I'm just hoping that I can get a simple, relatively clear explanation of where we stand with all of our applications for upper money, and where is everything. And, and in, as, and also, if, I probably have some questions about how to use the website a little bit. But in general, what I'm at, what I'm looking for is, and I'm just gonna make it total, how many applications have we received? How many of them did you determine were eligible? How many have been approved? How many are still in limbo? And so on and so forth. And I know when I go to the website, I'm able to determine some of that. But then, when I see applications that look to be incomplete, they then have a whole bunch of stuff that has been submitted, and in some cases, it looks like some of those applications have then been forwarded. So, it would just be really helpful to me to know, is, is there a report available from somebody that could just give me all the applications, where they are today, any that have not been approved yet, where and why, so on and so forth. And that's not even getting into, and looking at the, the results of the adjustments that we made. So, that's what I'm looking for tonight, hopefully.
So, my report didn't help you in any respect with that?
Somewhat.
All right. I mean, I didn't, like, count the different categories. I mean, that's something I guess I could do, but I don't, I haven't done that. So, I don't have, I haven't counted the number, I mean, except for what I say in the report. So, each one list, I mean, the, in terms of the applications that still need to be considered, they are individually listed for each category. So, they're before the committee. In fact, the committee met this evening and met on several of the nonprofits. So, I'm not, I mean, if you, if you wanna go through incomplete applica, I mean, one by one, she, I mean, I guess we could pull them up.
I do, I do not wanna go by application by application. So, if I look at the report that I believe you're talking about, you sent, it was the list of all the businesses that had been approved. Was that not what you sent?
Yes, did I? Yes.
All right. And if I'm correct, it was two pages, started with Academy of Dance?
Correct.
Ended with Ever Styles, and then started with Columbus House, and ended with Zion Lutheran?
Yes.
So, is it, is it correct for me to assume that these have been approved, but they haven't been approved by us?
Yes, they have.
They haven't been approved by us?
Yes. And those are all, they're all in my office, and...
Perfect.
You know, some of them have checks already, some of them get checks this Friday, and it's an ongoing daily thing. I have to get my...
How, how far they are in it is okay. These, so in effect, this is the list of all applications that have made it through the system from start to finish to approval pending...
Correct.
Resolution.
Correct.
There we are. So, now we go to the website, and... My first question is... My first question is... They would all still appear in that one main category of applications, correct? Like when I go to your website?
Yeah, the portal that you have in...
Yeah, the portal.
Has all the applications that came in, the nonprofit and the business. And they're in different categories based on what is in the report also that you have that Ms. Small and I worked on. And so they actually will be in incomplete, ineligible, or the completed applications, which are all on my list.
If I may ask, just again, because I want to make sure I totally understand everything, when I look at the portal, there are six categories. The first one is Application and Supporting Documents Business, of which there are 83. Applications and Supporting Documents Nonprofits, of which there are 40. So not, so stopping right there, the list we just referenced, the approved businesses and approved nonprofits would be among those two categories?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So then moving from there... I'll catch up. So there are 31 businesses that have been approved.
You still have businesses still that need to be reviewed?
Thirty-one businesses that Attorney Small shared with us that we've approved.
Yes.
Made it through the whole system. So then I look at the portal, and I see there are 83 original business applications. And what did I say, 33?
That have been approved.
Thirty-three that have been approved, there are still 66 listed as incomplete, and 11, 18 listed as ineligible. So is it, so should I assume that the 66 and the 18 are not part of the 83?
You still have a significant amount of the 83 that have not, that the committee still was reviewing to actually have them come to council for approval, so they were still in a review process going on, both the businesses and the nonprofits.
Yeah, and I don't want to be rude and cut you off, that's not what I'm asking. There is a category that says Wallingford Business Incomplete Applications 66. So my understanding is, applications in that category would not have been passed on to the committee, right?
That's correct.
So it's safe, is it... But are those 66 among the 83 in the first category, are they an additional 66?
They're actually in the incomplete category.
I know that, I'm looking at it, it says 66 incomplete.
On the portal, they're in an incomplete category.
On the portal, the 83 in the top category, are those complete?
Those are considered complete applications.
Okay, that probably was the beginning of my confusion, because I asked, was that all of the applications that came in? And it's not, thank you. So to help me, application, okay, I get it, application and supporting documents, I apologize. So those 83 you deemed were complete, eligible, and ready to go to the committee. And of those 83, the committee has already approved 33, and there are another 50 to go. And then we get to the next category, where we have 40 nonprofits which are complete and have passed your screening, and among those... Roughly 24 have been approved, and the balance still needs to be considered. So that's of the original, let's say 123 that came in complete, and you deemed eligible.
Yes, sir.
And are those the only ones that were passed on to the committee?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, great. So now we still have 66 business applications that are considered incomplete, 11 nonprofit applications considered incomplete, 18 business applications considered ineligible, and three nonprofits considered ineligible. So let's start with the ineligible. What leads you to classify them as ineligible?
There's criteria in the Treasury Final Rule and also in the Federal Uniform Grant Guidance that must be met to make them be eligible. So there are criteria that we review to ensure that they are eligible and allowable.
Thank you. And it's important for me to know this, because you're classifying them as ineligible based on, not based on our grading criteria that we had given the committee, or any of that stuff?
No.
Right?
They would not be eligible even at the federal level.
Thank you.
Because we have to meet those federal requirements, they must be...
It's important to stress this, because there have been claims made that we, and we'll talk about our little mathematical adventure later, but there have been claims made that applications that were ineligible based on ARPA guidelines were approved by the council through the mathematical formula that we decided to apply. And I want to make it perfectly clear that that's not the case. And that's important to make sure that's understood. So if an application was ineligible based on the ARPA guidelines, they fall into those two categories, and they still, now, are those, are either of those categories, are those applications that still have a chance? Are you going back and forth with them, because?
No, sir.
No, it's just, they didn't make it.
No, they didn't make it, they didn't meet the ARPA requirements based on the federal criteria that Treasury and the grant guidance.
So that's very helpful, thank you. So that leaves us with the 66 incomplete business applications and the 11 incomplete nonprofit applications, which you have been going back and forth with, I assume, to try to get them to complete.
We had been going back and forth with them with deadline dates and working with the committee at some point, and then after those deadlines passed, we did not receive the information that was necessary.
Okay, so then, is this a real-time report I'm looking at on the website?
Yes, sir.
So it's safe to say that 66 incomplete business applications are done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Eleven incomplete nonprofit applications are done?
Yes, sir.
They're not coming back?
Correct.
They're not making it to committee review?
No.
Because they never were completed. And then we also just, to go ad nauseam, the 18 and the three ineligible never made it to begin with.
Correct.
That's helpful to know. I do know that there were applications where you reached out to people, and they submitted things, so they, at some point prior to the deadlines, moved out of that incomplete into the Supporting Documents category?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we talked about a few of those, I asked about one, I think. So anybody that was still in the... In between, if you will, and they still, they needed to get more information into you, they had the opportunity, you reviewed it, and then you escalated them to the category that allowed them to be reviewed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm actually understanding this better than I thought I would.
Because initially, when the applications all came in?
Right.
There were actually only of the total amount, 57 that actually had all complete information.
Got it.
And, yes.
So you've gotten up to 57, it's the 83, and then so, all right, so this is where we are today. So where we are today is 83 businesses, 40 nonprofits. Among those, some have been approved, the remainders have not, and that's all that's still to be dealt with, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's very helpful. Which then leads me to discussions from here have to do with how and when they have been reviewed and graded, if they were, and we talked about some that were, we did something that caused a change, and there are still a number that need to be reviewed by the remaining committee members, and I don't believe there's that many, but there are some. I'm just going to make one more point and then pass it along. When I looked at the report from Counselor Allenson, there were 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, I apologize for doing it this way, I should have counted them earlier, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, that graded as a fail. Then we applied their derivative, what was it called again?
Standard deviation.
Standard deviation, I can't believe I forgot that. And 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, out of that number were upgraded to a pass, based on that.
I wasn't involved in it.
No, no, you're not involved in this.
You said it was 13?
It says 13, yeah.
I don't remember the number, it seems a lot...
Well, I'm looking at it, so I'm just saying, it said fail, and then it said pass.
Yep.
So I'm saying, out of the 20 whatever I said there were...
I'm agreeing for the sake of...
Well, the point I'm making, again, one argument was made that we were approving applications that were never eligible in the first place due to our overreach. And that's not true. And secondly, that when we adopted the standard derivation...
Deviation.
Deviation, I apologize. We approved everything that was denied, and that is not true. Basically, not even roughly 50% of the businesses that had failed originally were moved into the pass category, and it was usually a matter of eight, at the most, eight to 10 grading points, 62, 63, up to 74. But there were a number of fails that were 58, 45, 46. In other words, adopting this mathematical formula didn't automatically approve everything the committee denied. So I'm not saying that what we did was perfect, far be it, clearly it was not. But let's get on the right page with understanding what's happened here. Some changes were made based on an understanding or a feeling up here that maybe there was some, maybe or not, there was some conscious or unconscious bias going on in grading. So we wanted to throw a little mathematical formula in there to try to deal with that. It made a lot of people unhappy, I understand that. But that's where we are today. Roughly half of the ones that failed were then put into the category of pass, because they were within 10 points of passing anyway. And a number did not pass because they were clearly graded too low to begin with. Nothing, no applications that were ineligible according to ARPA guidelines even made it to the point of being considered for approval. So we've lost a few weeks, yes. Hopefully, we're back on track, we have a number of applications that still need to be reviewed, we know how many they are, if it doesn't go fast enough, we can step it up, but that's my understanding of where we are today. Thank you very much.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to reiterate what I said previously about the arbitrary putting of applications in the successful column based upon not the content, we don't need to go there again. But I wanted to ask you, in the list of approved applications, AB 003, which is Banana's Ice Cream, there is no entity in the state of Connecticut known as Banana's Ice Cream. So the application was submitted on behalf of an entity called MMK Incorporated. Now, that's the application that I believe I was referring to when I mentioned that I didn't think they were in compliance, and the reason why I do so is MMK Incorporated wasn't created until December 9, 2021. So my understanding is that the criteria is that the entity can't be created basically post-pandemic to be eligible. I know the criteria that we had set up, we had talked about, is they had to be in existence in 2019, so what am I missing?
We've had this conversation already. So it was an entity, it was a family-run business, the business was in place the whole time, but one family member bought out the other family member. So the consultant passed it on to the committee, and my understanding is, while you raised the issue, the committee made a decision to disagree with you.
Okay.
And that that was a consistent business. I mean, that's, you know, you can argue about that, I mean, I understand your point, but it was argued and it was decided, and that grant has been awarded.
Well, there were a lot of things decided by the committee that have been thrown, it just has been disregarded.
Well, I'm not going to agree with that, but...
Well, the committee, you know, there are applications that the committee reviewed that, in retrospect, when they got to your office, something...
Yeah, I did find things, and, you know, if I caught something, then it ended there. I've talked to you about some of those, you know, some of the ones where I just don't, I wouldn't go forward with them absent some direction from this council. I can give you examples, you know, some of them come in, and there's a small portion of the grant that really is not eligible. So I've said, that's not eligible. So between the consultant, the committee, and my office, we've been catching things long, nothing is perfect, this is a lot of information. So that's been the goal, and that's what we've been doing. So, you know, the same way that this council decided that the businesses could correct the profit and loss versus tax return situation, that was done, that's still being done. I'm not sure everybody's going to do it, but, so those will go back into the mix. So, you know, this has been something, I mean, on the Bananas, I mean, yes, we should have put the...
So my...
It was LLC or an Inc., but it was doing business as Banana's Ice Cream, so, and that's, the agreement has the proper corporate name to it.
So, and I understand, you know, but to say, well, the committee did it, so it's okay?
No, I didn't, I did not say that.
Okay, so I just want to stay with the...
The consultant made a decision that the fact that the business was in business during that whole time, and there was a transfer of the ownership from one family member to another, that that was sufficient to make it past the consultant. And then the committee, as I understand it, debated whether or not that was sufficient, made that determination. So I don't have any reason to think that there's, I mean, I didn't do anything about that.
Well, I'm just concerned because I reviewed the federal guidance, right? And I don't see any exception in there that says if it was a familial transfer, that it's exempted, it's not in there.
Does it say that I can't buy a business that was in place during that time? I take over the entire business, I take its assets, I take its debt, I take its income, and that I can't make that claim that that business was... and that I can't make that claim that that business was in place at that time?
Well, I guess the argument is that that negative effect, if anything, is baked into the sale price that you paid for the business during that time. I mean, the Fed said--
Well, it's a possibility, and it's also a possibility that it's not.
But that's incumbent upon the arms-length transaction that's done. My concern is that the guidance says the business has to be in existence, not in operation, in existence. So you're talking about, well, it was, it was an ongoing activity, and because it was ongoing pre-pandemic, that it becomes eligible. But I just don't read it, and I, and I didn't see any portion that says that. And I'm just, you know, we talk about, you know, approving things that shouldn't be approved. I'm, you know, I, I have to question it because it says clearly in the guidance, the business had to be, the business that's getting the money was supposed to be in existence in 2019, and this clearly wasn't. So I'm just trying to work through it. And it was the very first meeting of the committee, if I recall correctly. The committee didn't know what, what to do. They're trying to do its, its, its good work. You know, but here we are, right? They weren't in existence in 2019. The feds could come, I guess the feds could come in and flag it on us. I'm seeing Claire saying no. It's just a concern.
No, because when that, the business itself, the name of the business existed in 2019, and the request that they made was actually to expand that business, which is an allowable use of ARPA funds, to add a mobile unit. And so basically, they fell under an ARPA expenditure category, which allows for funds to a business for business incubators and startup or expansion assistance. So technically, it's not about who owned it at the time as well. It is that it was a legal business at the time in 2019 that was actually, could be shown in the state records and federal records.
But it, but just to be clear, it, it can't be shown. It isn't, they didn't buy the existing company. They created a new company and then bought from the old company whatever they bought, right? So I could see if, if it's linear and the incorporate, the corporation existed, and then somebody else purchased that same corporation. That's not what happened here. That corporation went away, I think in 2021. A new one was created, and that is who purchased the doings here. And, and that's the concern. So I don't know, above my pay grade, but it seems like an issue, so. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors Andrew.
Hi, good evening. I just have a couple of quick questions. So I, I want to understand the, Wallingford had the right to take $10 million as a, as a, I forget what the term is called.
Revenue loss.
Yeah, that's, that's what it was. Thank you. So when, when Wallingford takes that money, they have the ability to utilize it for, for anything, or does it have to be ARPA-related?
It's spelled out that it needs to be ARPA-related, but you, you have the flexibility to use it for other things that are governmental-related. And in fact, you would have had the flexibility, if you wanted to, to have designated a certain amount of funds towards businesses without having, and nonprofits without having to have gone through a full-blown application, grant application process like you, you did. You could have actually done a really much simpler process and then provided funding to them for, basically, it would have been for operating costs. So it wouldn't have been just for specific projects.
So, and again, just because I want to make sure that I understand that. So if a business or if a nonprofit didn't meet the criteria to put in an application, could they still be granted money by the town?
If you wanted to do a round that allowed for that, you could, you could do that. That would be up to the town to do that because you do have that flexibility from a revenue law standpoint.
Because I know that, I know we have our own, you know, nonprofits and, and support page that we have. It's part of the budget. We use budgeted funds for that. So similarly, we could also address maybe a business that didn't meet a particular concern, you know, they, this doesn't meet the criteria. If the town wanted to, they could meet that criteria.
Yes. The only, the only criteria they would have to meet under that situation is to ensure that they suffered and had proof that they suffered a negative economic impact. So the tax returns or the P&Ls would be necessary to show that they did suffer that impact from 2019 through the 2021. We don't go into 2022.
So we also, the, the other reason for the question is we had a number of fraternal organizations in town that are 501(c)(8). Now, that doesn't meet criteria directly. But if the town, is the town able to utilize the ARPA funds in that fashion if they're taking it out of that $10 million?
No, because treasury requires the nonprofits to be either a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(19).
All right. And, and so, so then if the town were to take their own funding, though, there's no, there's no prohibi, no prohibited use for that?
No prohibited use for that. You can offset, what you can do, you could actually offset governmental services with ARPA funding because that is one of the uses under revenue laws that is a strong use. And then you utilize your own funding for what you were talking about.
So we could meet, we could meet a criteria of the town, use the ARPA funds for the town side, and then that would hypothetically leave a surplus that we could apply in another fashion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't see any other hands on the council, any questions or comments from the public.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I had a question on the date the business existed. I thought in the final rule, there was a date listed that the business had to be in business by. My--
The final rule requires that a business would need to have been in existence in If, say, you were using the revenue loss, that would not be a requirement.
For the business, a revenue loss. But if, if the town was using the revenue loss. But the town's not using the revenue loss, so we'll throw that out.
It would have to, it would have to have been in existence as a business in 2019.
And when we say in 2019, does that mean December 31, 2019, July 1, January 1? Because I thought there was a date on the final rule.
There is, normally, it would be starting January 1, 2019.
Okay. to Attorney Fishbein's point, there is, I think, another one in there that doesn't meet that criteria. And I understand the rule where the town could take the money, the $10 million, for loss revenue, but that's not what the town did. The town had that option, they didn't do that option. The option is the way they did it. And I just have to say that to Counselor Testa's point, that there were, you know, Claire probably was looking at millions of applications everywhere, and, and she's nodding in agreement. And some did get by. I mean, there were some applications we had that had wrong tax ID numbers on them. They used somebody else's tax ID numbers. And, and I understand that you wouldn't have seen that, you know? And she's saying, yes, she wouldn't have seen it. But those were things that the committee did. And the reason that we're down to a few committee members, Mr. Testa, is because there were some issues that arose that you're fully aware of that seem to have biased in, in a direction that, to a favorite councilperson. And we felt that that was, I think there's only, I don't know this for a fact, but there might only be three commissioners, or three participants in the committee now that are left. So that means seventy percent have left the commission, maybe it's sixty, maybe it's somebody that didn't show to a meeting. But we were all, and I can speak for myself, but I've spoken to a few other members, we were all for doing this and doing it the right way, based on the criteria that was given to us by the final rule and what was given to us by the town council. And that's what we did. And the fault lies not with the commission, but the fault lies primarily with the council. Thank you.
Riley O'Connell, Edgerton Road. I just wanted to quickly build off of what Counselors Andrew brought up, and I'm glad you did bring up the $10 million in revenue loss deduction that we had, some of you and myself had pushed to use a year ago, and unfortunately, we did not. But if we are looking for future ways to make those organizations that do do a lot for the community somewhat whole, or for the town to help them out in some way, I hope we also look at, there were several businesses that similarly by our own rule set and by the federal rule set, we could have helped using that standard, or the deduction for the revenue loss that no longer qualified despite being directly impacted negatively by COVID. So for instance, there were several restaurants, storefronts that opened up in January, February of 2020, many of whom I'm sure we all frequent and use, who were hit just as hard, if not harder than anybody, but under the rule set that we had could not qualify. I know some did apply, some did not apply, but did not qualify. So if we are looking to help those organizations, that's also another part of the community that I hope we can look into, not making whole, but helping out where we can. Thank you.
Anyone else? Then we are back at the council. I don't think there's any action. Is there any further discussion from the council? If not, thank you for making the trip. It's nice to see you again. And can we get two motions to go into executive session, please? Uh, sorry?
Can we, can we get a clarification as to who is still working on the committee for us?
The responsive emails I got were from Mr. Regan, Mr. Glidden, and Ms. McNamie.
Okay.
I did not get an email from you. The clerk didn't forward it to me, so I was not aware of it.
So right now, it's three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fishbein considers himself reinstated.
Oh. As soon as I was asked, I said I wanted to be part of it. So evidently, it wasn't forwarded to the chairman for whatever reason.
So maybe there's four now?
Perhaps.
I just want to know, because I know that you appropriately asked that it not be a reply-all back and forth for FOI reasons. So we did not receive the response as you did. So I, we've been asked who's sticking around, who's not. Now would be the time to clarify that. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-225F and Section 1-206B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the following pending tax appeal matters. F.A.H. Silver Pond Limited Partnership versus Town of Wallingford and Walmart Real Estate Business Trust versus Town of Wallingford. And also pursuant to General, Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-206D with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Please, client, kindly clear the council chambers. Thank you.
I call the meeting back to order. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session, please?